That's a little loud. Welcome, everybody. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion for approval for this evening's agenda, although I believe--
Madam Mayor, I would ask that the commission also add a new item G4. This is the MLR contract, which was removed from the previous meeting. I've negotiated the update of a couple of terms in the contract, which were the terms we had concerns with at the last meeting. City Attorney reviewed it, and I believe he's in agreement with those terms. That's correct.
Commissioner Brady?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the inclusion of the MLR contract under G4.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Glickman. Is there a discussion in adding that on approving the agenda? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Yes.
Or could be aye. Opposed? Say no. Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, the next one is the minutes, taking the first one for the special meeting, January 28th. Commissioner Brady?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the special meeting held January 28th, 2025.
Support. Okay. Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Glickman. Is there discussion on the minutes for January 28th? Okay, hearing none then. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That motion's carried. Now for the minutes for February 18th. Commissioner Brady?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held February 18th, 2025.
Support. She can handle it. Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there discussion on the minutes for February 18th? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That motion is carried. We're to the portion for public comments this evening. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? And I'm gonna call on John first, because I think you got your hand up first.
John DeAngelo, Metamora Township. Hey, I noticed that there's some renewals for Shango. And every time I drive by that place, it smells like weed, really strong. And I've called the police department to complain about that. And I'm wondering, did they only get one ticket? Should I even call anymore? I'm disappointed that the town still smells like weed. It's, that's an ordinance. It seems like it's being totally ignored. And I don't want to keep calling the PD if we're not gonna do anything. So during your comments, if you could let me know, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
We can have Mr. Romack speak with you afterwards.
Thank you.
After the meeting, to give you an update. Anything else, John? That's it? Okay. Anybody else? A gentleman in back.
Hi, my name is Chris Hall. I'm a tennis advocate and I'm one of the assistant boys, tennis coach for high school. And when I saw in the newspaper that you're planning on putting pickleball courts in a tennis court down in Krampenau, I was super excited. So thank you for that. But I just want to introduce myself, offer my services to all of you if you have any questions. I think it'd be a really good idea if you talk to a lot of people who know tennis and pickleball when you're putting your plans together. And as far as, I don't know where you're at in the process, but the United States Tennis Association offers grants that you can apply for. I think I mentioned, I sent, I've called you an email that outlines that. But you have to get start, you have to include the USTA at the very beginning. And you can get up to $200,000 in grants if you do that and you qualify. So the fact that you're scraping these courts and you're starting from scratch, I think puts you at a higher level to get a much larger grant if you, you know, if you use their services right off the get-go. And I know this engineering firm that you're hiring might do that. And I went to their website and see any tennis-specific stuff on their website. The USTA obviously helps communities across the nation install tennis courts all over the place. And in many, many communities smaller than LaPierre. So I would highly recommend that you take advantage of that opportunity. And if you have any questions or you, or about tennis, go, you know, let me know. I'm here to help. And I would encourage everybody to play the game, because they did a study some years ago. Tennis was the number-one healthy sport that you can play. It adds approximately 9.7 years to your life if you play on a regular basis. I played today for three hours, and I could go out and play right now. So it's a great sport. So, you know, and if, another idea is if anybody here wants to play, you want to test it out, contact me and I'll take you out and you can do it. One of the, one of the things that they're offering right now is pickleball's exploding. Tennis is a very difficult game to play well. And I think that's one of the problems it has, is it's extremely healthy, but you have to play it for a really long time in order to be good at it and to enjoy it. My philosophy in life is do whatever it is you do, enjoy it and have fun. Pickleball is much easier to play, and it's a slower game. And one of the things that the USTA is doing now is they're introducing what they call red ball for adults. And for those of you who aren't familiar with tennis, when kids start to play, they play with a red ball. It's a, it's a larger spongy ball, and it's slower because their athleticism and their attention, their, their hand-eye coordination is not developed yet. So they slow the game down. And then there's a progression that kids go through to get to high school level and beyond. They're doing it now with adults. They're starting adults with red ball. Because it's a lot like pickleball. You play it on a smaller court, but you're using a tennis racket instead of a paddle ball. And it, and it's taken off, and adults are having a blast.
Sorry, your three minutes is up. But appreciate all the information that you've sent us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great information. Anybody else here for a public comment? Sir?
Hi, I'm Chloe. I'm from Dryden. I'm not really around LaPierre. But there was this one time when I was around somewhere, I don't know where I was. But there is this video store that I always like to go to, because I got to rent DVDs to watch whatever I wanted for a little price. And I think that if more places had that, that it would be a nice chance to open an opportunity for more families to enjoy stuff when they go out. So that's my contribution.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this time? Okay, seeing no hands, we'll move on. Ms. Oh, Ben Mayor. Go ahead.
Heavenly Father, we invite your Holy Spirit here. Lord, thank you that you have brought each person here tonight, that it is not by coincidence, it's by your design. Thank you that each of us played an important role in your plan, and that your plans always prevail, and that you create only good. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for the protection of our city, our state, and our nation. We pray that you continue to have your hand on our city, have your hand on us as policymakers and decision-makers for our city. Pray, Lord, that we'd all have an open mind, a pure heart, that we would make decisions with integrity and honesty, and to benefit our city. Thank you for all that you're doing and that you will continue to do. Bless each person here tonight, Lord. Thank you that they were well enough and able to come and share and listen. Appreciate every person here. Again, thank you for being such a good, good Father. I pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Anybody else? All right. Now we will move on to the dissent agenda. Ms. Swindell?
To approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Motion was made by Commissioners Swindell and supported by Commissioner Petrie. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That motion's carried. Okay, bill listing.
Ben Mayor?
Commissioner Brady?
Make a motion to approve the bill listing for March 3rd, 2025, in the amount of $2,256,367.31.
Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Petrie. Is there discussion on the bills? Bill listing. Okay, seeing none, hearing none. Then Ramona, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Brings us to the administrative report, G1, for the public hearing for the proposed 2025 Michigan State Housing Development Authority. Commissioner Brady?
I make a motion to recommend setting a public hearing for March 17th, 2025, at 6:30 PM, or as soon thereafter as may be heard, for the receiving of public comment on the proposed 2025 Michigan State Housing Development Authority, My Neighborhood CDBG Rehab Grant Application.
Support. Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That motion has carried. And that would be the property lease agreement with the Grand Trunk Western Railroad. Commissioner Petrie?
I move that we approve the property lease agreement with Grand Trunk Western Railroad Company and authorize the city manager to sign the necessary documents.
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Petrie and supported by Commissioner Glickman. Is there discussion regarding this motion? Hearing nothing. I just had Ms. Swindell.
The other one's been expired for a few years, and it has been business as usual. Did we just write them a check like we usually did for the years that it's been expired? Like, just carry on the lease?
Yeah, so basically, they came to us saying the lease has been expired for a couple of years. Oh, by the way, we changed the rate to 500 bucks a year, or whatever it is now. Please pay that amount as quickly as possible. And we said, no, thanks. So this is a result of a significant amount of back and forth, probably over the last six months. Mr. Church is on his way up to a conference, and that's the reason he's not here. He's probably the one person who's more upset about this than I am. I just think they did a very poor job communicating with us. You know, this could be one of those ones where you kind of have to hold your nose and approve it, acknowledging that it's gonna be, I think it's a $575 per year versus people $100 lease rate. But worse than that is they want us now to have an environmental insurance rider, which is about 200, I'm sorry, $2,000 per year. And on top of all that, we've asked them on multiple occasions, what happens if we don't approve of this? And they refuse to answer the question. So at this point, I think we have two options. We can approve the changes as requested by CN Railroad, which we understand will, you know, be business as usual. Or we could table not approve this at this time, and staff go back and continue to ask the question, what happens if we don't approve this, which has been ignored up to this point. So it's an unfortunate place where we find ourselves today, but that's, that's what's happened over the last six months. I would also indicate that the city attorney and I spent quite a bit of time trying to negotiate more favorable terms for the city, which was flat-out rejected by CN Railroad. So they seem to think they have a sober barrel.
Commissioner Petrie?
I wondered, what, what do some of the other depots, like Durand and that area, the other side of Flint, what do they pay for? Did you, I just wondered if we can compare that. Do they pay the same or less?
So we only asked our contact at CN. We have a contact with those other communities. But what we were told is that they're basically bringing all communities to the same rate. And I don't know if they just forgot us or not, but they indicated that every other community is paying the new proposed rate that we're now seeing here.
And what is the rent? When we rent that out, what do we make?
So the Amtrak stays in the building itself?
The depot is rented out for parties?
I don't know.
Forty dollars an hour?
Yeah, it's not much.
Forty an hour?
But we're not talking about the Amtrak building. We're talking about the, the platform that--
That the people--
Yeah, that Amtrak uses to load their people. Now, Amtrak leases that from CN Railroad. And they'll, you know, they're only able to do that if the city has a lease with CN Railroad as well. That's the story. So my fear is that if we don't go along with the program, that perhaps Amtrak might not be able to pick up at the station. Because Amtrak wants to spend some money, make it bigger, nicer, easier to load, et cetera. But they won't tell me that.
So does Amtrak or the railroad company pay us anything to have that picked up at the station?
I believe Amtrak pays us 1,000 bucks a year, I think it is, something like that. Which, you know, kind of covers our costs. But it's, it's kind of an upending of how things have been for the last many years.
And so Amtrak or, or the railroad company, does it, they don't, they're not gonna care if we have a stop here?
No, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
It is historical.
The building?
Yes. So I think it's a small amount to pay. I think it's a good thing that we keep it. I'm sad that it's, that they're raising it 400 and some dollars, but--
In the grand scheme, I agree with you. It's a small amount. I just don't like how they went about doing it.
Yeah, I mean, something chucked down my throat, but it is a nice opportunity to have for everyone. Everyone should take a chance to ride the train at least once. Okay, so motion was made. Any further discussion? Seeing none. So then all, well, this involves, it's a little poll vote.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Motion's carried. The next one is for the military aircraft flyover during the Friday night fights.
So, sorry.
Commissioner Brady?
I make a motion to approve the military flyover by a military aircraft during the Friday night bikes event, June 6th, 2025, and authorize the city manager to sign the necessary documents.
Support. Motion, well, motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Atwood. Is there a discussion on this?
I just wanted to mention that I was trading this like an amendment to a pre-approved special event application, which is why I'm sending you guys for approval.
Okay.
I think it's-- I think it's really cool. I did talk to Norm today, and he said that it's just our approval. They have to have our approval to even apply for it. It doesn't mean it's going to happen 100%. They still have to apply for it. The Department of Defense has to approve it, and then it has to go through FAA, and then 14 other things. And with the things in DC currently, they have no idea whether or not it will be approved, or if it will happen even later if it is approved. So, but they just need our blessing to be able to do, do the application and start the process.
I as well had a couple of conversations, and my understanding that they really do need to get it going now because of what you just stated, and that it would take at least three months. So that's the way of how it works. Okay, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That motion's carried. I think we, it'll be a really nice opportunity to have here if it happens. Okay, G4.
Ben Mayor, if I might lead on this one?
Yes, please.
So, Ben Mayor, we've added G4. This is the MLR contract regarding First Street and Second Street, which was pulled off the agenda. Last time, at that time, the city attorney and I identified a couple of contract provisions that were included in previous contracts that have now been rectified. In particular, the insurance liability for the engineer that has been increased from the dollar amounts, which is $99,500, to, I believe it's one or two million dollars. Mr. Francis, do you remember? It was one or two million dollars.
Here, here, policy is two million.
Two million. So from $99,000 up to $2 million. And then also, there is a contract provision in there that would allow them to sub out the contract, which doesn't make sense for a professional contract, so that part's been eliminated. With that, I would recommend that we approve this contract as presented.
So a motion needs to be made?
Ben Mayor?
Ms. Swindell?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with MLR Engineering for Design Engineering Services for First-- Oh, that's another one. No, that's another one. First Street and Second Street. First Street and Second Street Reconstruction Water Main Replacement Project from Lincoln to Jackson in the amount of $99,500.
Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell. Is there support?
Support.
And supported by Commissioner Brady. Discussion on this?
Commissioner Petrie? I wondered, have, did we run this by Row at all? And the reason I'm asking is I used to live on First Street, so I'm well aware of the conditions on First and Second Street, and the amount of water and basements and problems that were, that we, all of us, a lot of us, had. And so I'm wondering, since Row is very familiar with our city and the streets, did we even get a bid from Row before we decided to go with this engineering company?
Well, we didn't get a bid. We didn't get a quote.
Or a quote?
Oh, yes.
And what was?
It was more expensive.
What, was it apples to apples? I mean, I didn't see that, so that's why I'm asking. What?
So, no, it was not apples to apples. Row did not include in their quote some of the things that we wanted to see done, and it was more expensive.
Any more discussion? So this involves money. So I'm asking for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
No.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Okay, the next thing is under your city manager's report. Mr. Romack, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I've only got one thing this time. Joint meeting, it's that time of the year. So I want to talk, I guess, briefly about the formatting, I guess, location and date. So I believe last year, we did a Monday off date, similar time. I believe we held it over at the rec center, the community center downstairs. Of course, for the mainstream programs, that's why we have to do the joint meeting. There has to be an educational component. So I guess, you know, we'll take those in order. Do we have a timeframe that you guys want to do it? Day of the week? Does it matter to you? If you want the city to put together, staff to put together some proposed dates to go in there?
I think the sooner the better, because I know some planning commission people were asking that we have some dialogue soon.
So April? That work for this board?
Well, we, we have meetings, and our budget meetings are in April, so.
April's full.
We could do May. Okay, do you guys want to do a Monday? Do you want to do-- Do you want to do a Saturday? Here, Saturday, we can do it during the day earlier, and obviously most people have to work that day. Or we could do it similar to what we do with our off meeting dates, just pick a Monday, 6:30, hold a kind of joint session that day.
I wonder if a Saturday morning would get more public participation.
I think we're fresher Monday than on a Saturday morning rather than late again.
Good. So we'll look into May Saturdays, we'll bring up a couple of options for you. 12 noonish, you guys want to start in the morning?
Yes.
So which one?
Ten.
Okay, we'll look early-ish in the day line.
How long is the meeting going to be?
Depends on how long you guys want to talk.
Technically, I mean, two, three hours, and starting at ten, it's kind of late.
Maybe.
Nine thirty. That would be a little better.
How long were the last ones? Not very long.
Close to three hours.
You've been on Saturdays.
Well, sleep until eight.
They're weak. I'm kidding. Oh, I'm there.
Okay. And then formatting, you know, we'll have to have some kind of educational component. Mr. Brady, I know you've been working on a thing that you did with the MML, is it, do you want to do that joint meeting?
I, we kind of have rolled the discussion around, I was just discussing with Commissioner Petrie, it's like, what's the point of it? And I think we really need to narrow down what we wanted our point to be, but I'm willing, and I think with continued work, we can find something productive with that.
I would like some kind of a meeting. I have a plan that I'd like to share with everyone.
Okay.
I will share it with you before.
Okay. Something I would like to do is talk with Commissioner Bostick, the planning commission of the DDA, she's indicated she has, oh, how would you clarify her statement, she wants to have more open-ended discussion with the rest of the, yeah. But to kind of save time, I think what we probably should do is have each of the boards maybe come up with their list of concerns for the meeting, so it doesn't end up in a wild, open discussion.
I like that idea. That way we're making sure that we are addressing each board's concerns.
All right, I'm sure at some point I'll find a way to have poster boards and stickers for us to vote on somewhere. So, any other discussion regarding the?
And colored dots, Ramon loves that.
Yes, absolutely, colored dots. Anything else about the joint meeting? You guys want me to?
Location, you decided on.
Yeah, do you guys have any thoughts on the location? We obviously want to try to keep it local, because we want the citizens to be able to attend. Does the community center downstairs work again? You guys want to try to do it here?
It's crowded at the Rec Center. We did have it one time, I thought it was really effective, we had it at the Legion, it was very open and allowed for all the commissions and a lot of the public, and so.
When we did that, it was COVID year, and nobody could hear anybody, because that's an enormous room, that's the problem.
Well, they have a sound system. I mean, if we gave them.
It wasn't just that, it was kind of the acoustics because of, I don't know how big it is, but, you know, it is a nice room, lots of parking.
Is there any other good locations that are nice and big like that?
I wonder if the PICS or the Gallery, depending on what their schedule is.
All right, so let me contact those groups and see if they're even open with the timeframe we're looking at.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll make sure to take this to other boards, once we kind of have some of this nailed down. So come back to your next meeting probably for a formal approval of plan. I believe that's all I have today.
Our city attorney's report.
I'm not being specific, sir.
Okay, thank you. Our unfinished business, which is appointments to boards and commissions. I would like to have a couple motions to approve Adam Perry for the DDA authority, so Downtown Development Authority, that current term from now until January 1st, 2029. I need a motion and support.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Swindell?
Make a motion to appoint Adam Perry to the Downtown Development Authority Board through January 1st, 2029.
Support.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Atwood. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That motion's carried. This one's a little weird. I'd like to appoint myself to continue to be reappointed for the park board, and that term will expire April 1st, my current term, and that'll go till April 1st of 2028. And I need a motion for support and a second.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Swindell?
I wish to appoint Madam Mayor Debbie Markward, reappointed to the board through, park board through April 1st, 2028.
Okay.
Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Brady. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That motion's carried. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, there'll be a few more coming up for the park board, probably next meeting, I think.
Are you still accepting applications for that?
Sure, there are reappointments as well.
Madam Mayor, I'll make sure we'll get some information out of the city's website and social media about what positions are open right now and we're accepting applications for.
Okay. Including the commissioner appointments?
For all, all.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Okay, and then in your packets, you were able to read your departmental communications and the planning commission 2024 in your report. And that brings us to public comments. Yeah. Would anybody like to make a comment at this time? Okay. Hearing none, then it would be our closing of comments. Commissioner Swindell?
I'd like to thank the young people in the audience for coming. I know you have to, and your teacher makes you, and it's really not as exciting as it might sound. But we do a lot of, we do get a lot of business done, and it's important to be part of the process and see how it works. Even if you don't live here, go to a meeting, you know, wherever you do live too, it's good to see the way different boards do different things, and I appreciate when people come to our meetings. I say, I love it when there's lots of books in the seats out there, because sometimes there's not any accepted gentleman overhear from the newspaper, so I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Petrie?
I have a few things, so, hang on. I don't know who to ask about the light at DeMille on 24, is that an MDOT thing or is that an RDOT thing?
I guess you'll let me know, and then I'll put a stamp to it down, file the appropriate committee.
Okay. Just, I had a constituent call, and it's just kind of.
Is it out, or?
No, it's the way the turning signal goes, depending on the traffic, and I literally sat there yesterday for 25 minutes watching, trying to collect the data, and I saw exactly what he was talking about, but it wasn't consistent. And so, it's not a big deal, but I just wondered if it's something that can be just answered for us, so that we're like, okay, that's just the way it is. The other thing, I had two people call me regarding taxes. They didn't know that we were closed on Fridays, they didn't come on Thursday, so then we were closed on Monday, so they came Tuesday and they were told that they could have put it in the box out front. However, that is not marked for taxes, it just says voting, unless it's somewhere, I didn't see it. And so I just think that if we are going to be closed on Fridays, on the day when people get paid on Fridays, that's when they want to pay their taxes, we, I just think that we could do some creative scheduling, because even Little Marlet is open five days a week. So if people want to have the long weekends, they could work, you know, we could work people Monday through Thursday, Tuesday through Friday, so that we are in service five days a week for our constituents. I just feel like we're a big enough town, I'm saying it again, I'm not, it's not going to be popular, but I think we can still work it out. They can still work their 410s, and our, and our city can be open five days a week. We're this county seat, we're a city of about 10,000, and I just think we need to really think about that and, and have maybe some more discussion on it, because these people got charged a late charge, which, you know, wasn't a $5 charge. And so I understood their frustration, because they didn't know they could put their taxes in the voting thing. So better, I'm just asking, we need better communication for them, so that they don't feel angry, because nobody wants to pay taxes anyways. I wanted to thank Chris for your interest in our tennis courts. He has some great information for the grant money and, and having the tennis courts done well to last, so I didn't know you were going to be here tonight, thank you for coming, I appreciate you giving us all that information. I hope we really, really consider it and look into it, even if we have to wait to get the grants, even if we have to wait another year for it to be done well and correctly and as frugally as we can have it done. So that's my, my thing on that. Wanted to thank you for doing the mapping thing and see where we'll go with that. I wanted to talk about the polar plunge that was this Saturday. I think this was either second or third year. I didn't get to go, but I had people that went. It's for such a good cause, it was for the Special Olympics. They had 4,500 people attend, and approximately 150 took the plunge. They raised last year about 33,000, this year they raised close to 35,000. So it's a great fundraiser for a great, great cause. It featured the Lapeer County Sheriff's Department, the Lapeer County Dive Team, the Michigan State Police, Lapeer County EMS, the Elba Fire Department, and I'm probably missing somebody, so forgive me, but I'm hoping that there's good pictures where everybody can see, I got to see some on Facebook, just to see what it was all about. We had a beautiful, freezing cold sunny day, but it was a beautiful day out on Lake Napa Seine, and thank you to Kevin Nysley for hosting that again, very generous of him, and they had a great turnout, so I wanted to just say I'm sorry I missed it this year, hoping I get to go next year. I won't be participating, but I'll be watching. Thank you.
It's cold, don't do that.
150 people went in, that's amazing.
Thank you. Commissioner Brady?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Glissman?
No, thank you. Commissioner Brady, the lighting?
It's funny you brought up the lights, because my wife has been bothering me to bring up the lights, and it's the, it's the smart lights, and people are used to the, I don't want to say old, like, because they've been out for a while, but it doesn't cycle like you would think it would. If it doesn't sense a car there, it won't, like if you're in the turn lane and you're pulling up, the lights are turning yellow, and you think it's going to turn green, well, it's not going to, because it didn't sense a car in that lane. And it's happened to us out here on Napa Seine, the vehicle wasn't pulled up far enough and sat there forever, and little patient me was getting a little impatient, because it's like, just pull up. So I was actually, I actually thought about reaching out to our state rep, because there needs to be some sort of signage to let people know. I don't, I don't even know, because I don't know which ones are the smart lights and which ones aren't. And I've, I've been through, I've seen people go right through a red light thinking it's green and it's not. So it is kind of a, I know they're doing it for traffic flow and smart, they call them smart lights or whatever they're called, but sometimes if you're not paying attention, they're not real smart lights.
Correct.
For that reason, I hesitate, I pause before I go, because I don't know if the light is going to turn green or not. So I, I might reach out to our state rep as well, just to see what, if that is a concern statewide, because I would assume that some of those lights cause accidents, just because they don't cycle like we're used to. Also, I'll be going to Washington DC next week for National League of Cities event with the MML, some of the MML staff, and then a few of the trustees. I'll be riding with Don Jerry, the mayor from Sault Ste. Marie, because he hates to fly, and I didn't want him riding alone, so.
Oh.
So it'll be a good bonding time, he's the current president of the MML, so we should have good conversation on that long trip.
Yeah.
I call him Grandpa the U.P. That's what I call him.
Wow.
That's his nickname I gave him.
Okay.
And that said, they got full, every day is going to be busy with meetings, and should be a good time, fighting for local municipalities.
Bring us back a little bit of a report, be great if you can.
Yep, that's it, sorry.
Mr. Ramon, do you have anything else?
Yeah, just two minor things. So don't forget that CAPCon is coming up, I'll be in attendance, I'm not sure who else here will be at the CAPCon with me, I'll be up in Lansing. And Melissa, Mr. Petrie, I just wanted to comment on your, your comments about the, about the tax bills. I'm told that the bills all have it indicated they're on, that we would accept them in the drop box. We also have signage up on the doors that said that we would accept them in the drop box.
But if they, this person, the two people did not know that the voting drop box was the one?
Okay.
Because it says voting, so they didn't want to put their taxes in.
Dropbox out back.
There's a back as well.
Well, they didn't know.
It says that accepts taxes.
Well, I'm talking about the box up on the front.
They should not put it there.
No, right, but they were told they could, so I just, I'm doing what they asked me to do, I'm just talking.
No, it's fine, I just want to make sure we do the best we can.
Yeah.
Is it possible to put a note on that box?
Well, yeah, I mean, we always take feedback, anytime we get it, and we want to make sure that we do the utmost best we can for citizens, so we'll do better next time.
Okay. Anything else?
No, not just on paper.
Okay. Great, well, the only thing I, I guess, is to agree with you about the smart lights. I have had a couple comments from individuals before, and I've kind of explained some of it myself, too. But just because the light is green, even with smart or not smart lights, doesn't mean you shouldn't look both ways. Almost got, we almost got, my husband and I, crammed by a semi that just, on 24, went straight through. So luckily, we stopped, headed out, and then, ooh, stop. So everything that we can do for safety has to be done, obviously, but. Russ, do you want to, welcome, by the way, thank you for being here. Do you want to talk about the smart lights at all, or?
As far as, as far as.
Or not?
You know, we do have some throughout the city, not just MDOT, and a lot of times you'll, you'll go past the, the point where they actually detect you, or you can just, like, go right through the light and it won't get you at all. You go through there so fast that it just changes, there's only a few seconds of timing in there, so that's, that's a lot of the reasons why it won't catch you. As far as the delays on 24, because I've had a lot of complaints about sitting here in Napa Seine, I've called MDOT, let them know about it, and they have no result for me, so I haven't had any comments about DeMille, but I'll keep an eye on that one, too. As far as I know, Napa Seine has been our own problem child.
Okay, thank you. And I really don't have anything else either. So with that, we've completed what's on our agenda for this evening, and so I will now declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you. Look.